All right, it is 5:00. That clock is about 10 minutes slow, so we are going to go ahead and call this City Council Workshop for Tuesday, April 17, 2018, to order and let the record show that the entire council is present. And so with that, we are just going to go ahead and start. We're going to start off with our discussion items. DS 13 -- excuse me, DS 18, that's 031. City manager updates. Is that correct? Are we doing that first? Okay. City manager update, introduction of solid waste. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we proposed a change in the order simply because this is an important topic, and I didn't want the council to get tired before you had to think about it. So I think it was last January, the City Council asked me to prepare a request for proposal to look at bids for privatizing our solid waste functions. As a result of that, we put together an RFP that contained several alternatives in it. The first one is a base bid that is comparable to what the city presently provides in terms of solid waste services. So it deals with a base bid that includes three cart sizes, the complementary services that the city offers in terms of free drop-off of a certain amount of solid waste each month, a spring cleanup, bulk gathering of solid waste, the operation of our transfer station, and the operation of our recycling center. And there might be some other things that I'm forgetting, but essentially, everything that we're doing now in terms of solid waste was in the base bid. Then we asked for an alternate, a bid alternate number one, which included not three, but one cart size. So a 96-gallon cart size was then part of the proposal in alternate one. Alternate two included a 96-gallon can for solid waste and a 96-gallon can for a curbside Included in the RFP were provisions that the proposers hire all of our displaced city employee workers relating to the solid waste function, that they purchase our vehicles, that they lease our transfer station, and the recycling center. This RFP went out on the street on February 12, and the deadline for submittals was March 16. Included in the RFP was a scoring criteria where six different criteria were outlined with the number of points that would be given for each one of those criteria. And we received four proposals to the RFP. The whole process was overseen by our purchasing division. Randy Jimenez is our purchasing manager. The committee, after the bids were received, we received, as I mentioned, four bids, one from FCC, one from Waste Management, one from Frontier, and one from Texas Disposal. Following receipt of those bids, proposals, I'll probably end up calling them bids, technically they're not, they're proposals, there was a staff committee that reviewed the proposals and ranked them according to the criteria that was in the RFP. The staff committee was comprised of Dennis Baldwin, John Locke, David Olson, and Amy Berlarley-Hyland, who is our city engineer. I'm not sure if you've met Amy yet, but she's right over here. Slide number three is a summary of the city's current rates for the three cart sizes. So on the graph on the right, what you're looking at there, the red part of the bar is the base rate for the service. The yellow part are amounts that would shift from solid waste to another function in the city where the bid -- where the proposals to be received. The pink part would be amounts that could be eliminated. The green part would be kind of a carryover amount that would have to be added to the proposals that were received from the bidders. And that includes things like the mowing function that we currently have that's paid for out of the solid waste fund. Some portions of the billing and customer service, for example, would carry forward and be part of that function as well. And then there's a debt service increment in the rate that needs to be considered. So we have borrowed money to buy equipment and facilities in order to operate this function, and that debt doesn't go away, so it needs to be considered as well. So the red part, that's how our rates are composed here in the city. Now, if you go to slide number four, this is a little bit more detail on the shifting costs that we've calculated, the city costs. So part of those, the yellow part that you see on that pie graph, the $2.92 of the rate would have to shift somewhere else in the city. And on the right, you see a table there where it says general fund, 1.1 million, and water fund, 400,000, and drainage, just short of 50,000. Those are the amounts that would shift to the different funds. The green part is the carryforward. This is an amount that would be -- have to be added to the base proposals from each of the four bidders in order to make sure that our business was still taken care of. And the pink part could be eliminated from the bill. So you can see already, this is a -- it's not as easy as just comparing one number with the next. It's taken a great deal of effort on the part of the staff to make sure that this is fair and that it has been calculated appropriately. Let's go to the next number five. So what you're looking at on this slide is the results of the rating. So each of the four raters independently and separately rated the proposals. And then they came together and they basically added each score from the four raters together to get these composite scores. There were 800 points possible, and I could break that down for you if you're interested. I'm not going to cover it at this moment in time. The ranking results were that FCC Environmental came out as the number-one proposer, Waste Management, number-two, Frontier Waste Solutions as number-three, and Texas Disposal as number-four. And you can see the point spread there for yourself. Now, we're going to give a little bit of detail on each of the four proposing companies and their proposals. So if you look at slide number six, I'm going to go through the pros and the cons that the evaluators saw on each one of the proposals. FCC is, first of all, the only -- and it doesn't say that here, I'm just going to tell you. FCC is the only one of the four proposers that met all of the criteria in the RFP. The other three were short of meeting the criteria in one or more categories. So FCC has been in operation since 1911. They provide solid waste services internationally. They have current contracts in Rowlett, Texas, Orange County, Florida, and Polk County, Florida. They -- their residential base bid was lower than the city's on bid alternate number-one, which is the 96-gallon container only. Their commercial prices are lower than the city rates. They do intend to hire all of the displaced city employees. They will purchase the existing vehicles and containers. They will lease the transfer station and the recycle center. They have customer service available Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, and on Saturday from 8:00 to 2:00. The cons of their proposal is that their residential base bid was higher than the city for the 32- and the 64-gallon containers. And you can look at this one way or another. We listed as a con the fact that this company is based out of Spain. It's an international company without United States headquarters. The next slide is the second-ranked proposer, which is Waste Management. The pros that we have identified are that this company has been in business for 50 years. They have current contracts in various Texas cities, as well as others throughout the country. They do intend to hire all of the displaced city employees based on their qualification requirements, and they will purchase all of the city's containers. They have customer service that will be available Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:00, and on Saturdays from 8:00 to noon. And they have an online customer service connection that would be a 24/7 -- have 24/7 access. The cons on this proposal is that they did not submit a base bid proposal for the three cart sizes. They will only provide service through a 96-gallon container. Their commercial rates are higher than the city. They will purchase some, but not all, of the city's vehicles. They'll purchase 24 out of 72 vehicles. They will not lease the transfer station, but they will operate it and charge the city $51.32 a ton to operate it. And that, we don't know for sure, but that may impact the 300-pound free disposal for And they will not operate the recycle center. Slide number eight is Frontier Waste Solutions. The pros are that their base bid prices are lower than the city rates, their commercial prices are lower than the city rates, they will purchase all of the vehicles and the containers, they do intend to hire all the qualified displaced city employees, and they will lease the transfer station and the recycle center. They have customer service available Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. The cons on this proposal...
Do we want to take questions now, or you want to?
I got a question pertaining to when he said...
Go ahead, Mr. Rera.
Yes.
I need to find out...
Well, I think that's going to be similar to Waste Management's proposal. If the company's criteria are met, they'll hire them, and if they're not met, they won't. The cons is that this company was founded in February of 2017. In other words, they're a new company. They don't have long-term experience as a company, and they have no comparable municipal Their overall proposal was brief. It did not provide sufficient detail or evidence or information to demonstrate their ability to perform. And the references that were included in their proposal were for the individual people in the company. And the references were for those individuals when they worked for other companies, which you would naturally understand with a new startup company. On slide number nine, the Texas Disposal Systems, the pros were that they were founded in 1977. They are based in Texas. They have contracts, long-term contracts, with Austin, San Antonio, and Georgetown, San Marcos, Kyle, and Alpine, Texas. That's not to say that they do all of the collection for the large cities, but they do a portion of it. They will purchase all of the vehicles and containers. They will lease the transfer station, and they have customer service available Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:30, and on Saturday from 8:00 to 2:00. The cons of this proposal are that their base bid rates are higher than city rates, their commercial rates are higher than the city rates, they do not intend to hire all of the displaced city workers, and they will not operate the recycle center. If we go on to slide number 10, this is going to be a little bit more in-depth analysis of the various bids, the next several pages. So on slide number 10, what you're looking at are the city's costs on the left, and then in order of their rank, FCC, Waste Management, Frontier, and TDS, as they go across. The red portion of the -- what would you call that?
Bar.
Bar, yes. The red portion of the bar is their base bid. The green portion would be the carryover that we would need to add on to their bid, and the blue portion is the amount of debt service we would need to add on to their bid. Now, you'll see that that blue piece varies in size. And the reason it varies in size is that each one of the proposers proposed different amounts of money for the city's equipment. So if they proposed a lot, like Frontier, their proposal would be sufficient for us to pay off all the debt, so there's nothing additional we would need to add on to it. You take another one, they proposed an amount that would pay off a partial amount of the debt, and so we would need to add on something to continue to pay the debt that would be left over. And then I will note the yellow part again, that is the shifting part. The yellow part of the city's amount, which, by the way, is about $1.6 million a year, those amounts would need to shift to other funds, the general fund, the water and sewer fund, and the drainies fund primarily. And we're going to go to page number 11, which is the same kind of a comparison for the 64-gallon cart. I'll give you just a moment to look at that. I'm not going to explain it any further, because it's the same explanation for this one, just different numbers. And then if you go to page number 12, the same comparison for the 96-gallon cart. And then page 13 is the total. So we were looking for a way to compare the base bids across the board. So we have a certain number of 32-gallon carts. In fact, you can see it there. We have 832 customers that use a 32-gallon cart. We have 3,542 customers that use a 64-gallon cart, and 44,473 customers that use a 96-gallon cart. So we took that customer base times the proposals to come up with a total monthly revenue stream so that we could compare the base bid across the proposers. And I'll just give you a moment. You can see that the city's total -- well, let me back up for just a moment. The blue part down at the bottom of the screen represents the 32-gallon carts. The yellow part represents the 64-gallon carts, and the red part represents the 96-gallon carts. The total monthly revenue that would come off of those proposals is across the top of the red bar. This chart does not account for the shifted costs. You need to keep that in mind. Number 14 is bid alternate number one. This proposal takes into consideration a single 96-gallon cart. Now, there are some efficiencies to having one cart over three carts. And you'll see that the proposals are a little bit different. In terms of the city's portion, that is a calculated number, okay? We don't do a single 96-gallon cart. We do a combined three-size carts. But we have calculated, we have extrapolated and calculated from that what the city's cost would be if we had one cart only. So that comparable cost is a calculated cost, and you can see how that compares across the spectrum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Olson, do we know of those roughly 4,000 or so citizens who have the 32- and 64-carts? Do we know are those primarily in elderly fixed income, or do we know who those people are?
We do. I can't say right now, but we do know that. We know where they are. We know who gets it, who uses them. And by the way, we do have an additional service, and it was part of the proposal that if somebody wants an additional service where the employees would go up and actually get the cart out of the garage and bring it down, and then take it back. We have that service available today, and that was part of the proposal as well. There is an -- I think there's an extra fee that is attached to that. Is that correct?
It's a need-by-service. Sorry. It's a need-by-service if there's a type of interest that you have a value.
There might be more answer than you asked for.
No, no. I thank you for that, because the way I see it on a single 96-gallon cart service, it is definitely for 4,000 citizens, it's a rate increase, period.
And it's a rate decrease for 44,000.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question. Mr. Olson, on this, those 64 gallons, what Mr. Kilpatrick was referring to, and David said it was like a need assessment, do you know at this time how many medically people that really needs that service, and how much the cost is right now?
We have that number. Let's see if anybody here remembers it.
2,000.
200?
200.
200? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And he said it was free for the service to pay up there.
It's free, it doesn't cost anything.
Doesn't cost anything, as long as they got medical.
Okay. I just needed to know that. Thank you so much.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so are we ready to move on?
Ready. Continue.
So slide number 15 is bid alternate number two, which is refuse collection and curbside recycling with two 96-gallon cans. The refuse can would be picked up every week. The recycling can, canister, container, would be picked up every other week. So you can see how those bids compare across the spectrum. And on this one, the city's number is an estimated number. So we have actual numbers on the base bid, we have calculated numbers on the 96-gallon can, and we have estimated numbers on the recycling. We think the numbers are good, but there's some things there that if we, if the council decided to move in that direction, we would need to verify some of our numbers. Okay. I'm ready to go to number 16. This is a comparison of commercial rates. You'll notice that there's no overhead or shifting costs on these, and that's because in nearly every case, the proposers would establish a direct relationship with the customer. They would do the billing. There would not be a billing overhead or a customer service overhead that the city would have to deal with. So these are easy comparisons, and, well, I misspeak. They are not easy. And the reason they're not easy is because there are so many choices for a commercial enterprise to pick from. They can pick from a multitude of different-sized containers, and they can pick from an entire variety of how many times they get it picked up, from once a week to once a month. So when you look at that whole commercial operation, it is so difficult to make apples-to-apples comparisons. So what we did was looked at our current service requirements, and just simply took the proposals from the different companies and applied it to what we're doing today. And I think that's about as good a comparison across the four proposals that we can get. Let's go to number 17, please. So we're going to move forward, and I think there are some things the council needs to keep in mind as you evaluate the proposals in more detail. First of all, for all practical purposes, this decision is going to be a permanent change. Now, in saying that, I know very well that there are some cities that went to privatize their operations and then went back to a municipal operation. But after you've sold all of your equipment, after you have transferred all of your employees off to a private company, the opportunity to come back and restart all of that, for all practical purposes, is nearly impossible to do. So as you make your decision, you should keep in mind that this is a serious decision, and it's very likely a permanent one once you make it. Customer service is always a concern. You need to be satisfied that the customer -- the city cannot shed customer service. We can contract the service out. We can contract the collection. But at the end of the day, as good a job as a company may do, we still own a portion of that customer service. Rate control is another issue. With each of the proposals, there is a base bid for the first year, and there is an escalator clause included for years following that. That escalator clause would be based on the refuse rate index, which is a specific inflationary index for solid waste functions. It also includes consideration for a fuel surcharge if petroleum products go out of sight. And at the current time, that refuse rate index is running about 2.5% a year. And I think you can pretty much count on, once you make the decision, the contract will take over, and you can pretty much count on an escalator happening every year.
And that's something that they handle at their level. They're not going to come back to the council like we do now. Right now, the council makes that choice, but if we do that to them, it's...
The council gets to evaluate it and set the rates every year. Once we've adopted the contract, we will follow the contract.
Follow the contract.
There are budget impacts, and again, I will reference the shifted costs. There are budget impacts and again, I will reference the shifted costs. We need to consider that because the decision you make is going to have an impact on, on the general fund, the water and sewer fund and the drainage fund and perhaps some others too. Some of the internal service funds.
Mrs. Nash King?
Are you saying that once if someone else take over, we lose the council, the city, we lose all control?
As far as price, you know, if you do that escalation clause, which is in the contract, fuel surcharge, so prices will go up. We have, you know, no control over that because it's in the contract.
Your, your control is in adopting the contract.
Yeah. So right...
Once you adopt, you've exercised your control by adopting the contract. But once you've done that, the contract will take over and we will follow the provisions of the contract.
I would, I would kind of compare it to our cellular phone bills. You know, we sign a contract and every once in a while, you see an extra five dollar charge there because they're, they're going to adopt, they're not going to go down, you know, and decide what, I didn't agree to that five dollars, but it's tacked down there. So, you know.
So all the complaints will go to if we decide?
I think we'll still get the complaints because citizens look at us as the leader. Like our city manager say, you know, we're still going to have that customer service tied to us even though we put it out. Most of us are going to come to us.
The final consideration that I would mention to you is that in the proposals, there were, I believe, seven unsolicited variations of offers. The most, I don't know what the right words are. My, my language is failing me. Pardon me?
Notable.
Notable. Thank you. The most notable of those offers were fifteen-year proposals. The, the RFP that we put out was for a five-year proposal. So we got a couple back with fifteen-year alternative proposals. Now, obviously, these companies are going to be investing money on the front end. They're going to buy our equipment. They're going to buy our carts. They're going to, you know, replace them with their own carts. So there's, there's a capital outlay on the front end for them. And the longer that they can amortize those costs over more years, the better rates that they'll be able to give us. Now, we didn't ask for fifteen years. We asked for five years. So as we've looked at it, what, what we think as a staff is that after the council looks at it, if you decide that a fifteen-year term is a better term, I think what we should do and what I recommend to you is that we restructure an RFP and go out and ask for a fifteen-year term so that all proposers have an equal playing field to make their proposals on. Let's go to the final slide, number eighteen. So the next steps. The council needs to review the proposals and the documentation to your own satisfaction. You need to prepare whatever additional comments and questions you may have. We'd like to set a special workshop for next week where we start to delve into the more detail and, and your more detailed questions. You need to keep in mind that this is a controlled process. The proposals that we've received are still confidential. They are proprietary to the companies and we're going to honor that. We'd like to honor that. They are confidential until the process is concluded. Once the process is concluded, then there are public records and everybody can have a copy if they want them. And inside of the proposals, there is an anti-lobbying provision that continues in effect until the city council makes its decision. So if any of the proposing companies have additional questions or comments or want additional, the opportunity to make additional clarifications, they need to, as, as outlined in the RFP, they need to contact our purchasing division and make those comments to Saphonia Price. Now, Randy Jimenez has done a great job and he, he is leaving us. He's done so good, he's got someplace else to go. So Saphonia Price will be the person who, who will take, take the calls. And if the council has any questions, as you go through it, you're welcome to call, you're, again, you're, you're welcome to call Saphonia or you're welcome to talk to my, to me. And so, so copies of the, you have, you have the summary. You have, I think we have a copy of the RFP ready to give them, right? Okay. So on your desk, you have a copy of the request for proposal and the, the bid documents are available at City Hall for you to look at. Now, we did not copy them because they're about that thick. And, but you're welcome to look at them. Council has an office at City Hall. You're welcome to go in there, pour through them to your heart's content.
And I just, I just wanted to say, Mr. City Manager, because before we get too deep into this, what we wanted to do today was kind of present that to you guys, council members. So, and give you that time to look at. We didn't get, want to get too deep into discussion until next week because we haven't really had an opportunity. And I know that some council members, they want that ample time to dig in. And so what we did, we wanted to do this as a presentation and part of that, we didn't put that, I don't think we posted it on the website, the presentation, so that we, you, you're the first one to get that today so that you can digest it. And then next week, come back with your answers. And I just want to point that out because I know you guys are probably digging to get into it. But if you got basic questions, please, you know, let's just stay on that line. And then next week, let's jump into it and do that. Mr. Johnson?
Just two basic questions on page five of your slide. Could you provide by email the scoring criteria and also the individual scores for each section? I think you said there was four. If you don't have it today, you can just email it.
Do we have it?
And then just, just a comment. I'm going to take time and read. I will stop by City Hall and read those, those docs. I will say that for me as an individual council member, it's going to be important that I get citizen input prior to the twenty-fourth. So I had to figure out a way without violating anything, but also getting their input. And so we'll see how that works out.
And maybe, I, I don't know how that's going to work for you, but maybe we need to go through the process and before a final decision is made, we need to have some, some process for public input to that as well. In fact, we have, we have a lady that wants to make a comment today on a portion of this. She's, she's actually wanted to make a comment on solid waste and recycling for a long time and this is the, kind of the perfect opportunity. So she, she called in weeks ago and asked for this opportunity.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want the citizens to have an opportunity where it's very informal, not a public hearing where, you know, they only get three minutes. I really wanted to be more of a town hall style so we can go through everything with them and, and, and answer their questions as well because I won't vote on this until I have their full input.
And that's, that's good. But it, you know, we got to figure out how to overcome that challenge because so much information. If you just see it out on the outskirts, you know what this is, you can't make a good decision. You have to go in it deep and that's where we have to figure out how to do that, especially with our citizens. And so, Mr. Harris?
Yes. I'd just like to say that, you know, I concur with the Councilman Johnson there. But at the same time, I don't think I'll be ready to make any decision until I actually hear from each of the bidders. And the reason I say that is because, you know, even as I look through, as I look through the summary here, I see when it talks about employees, I see the word intends, intends, intends. And I know that word intends is not factual. I know that word intends doesn't mean that it will happen. It's what we intend to do. But sometimes even based on, based on, you know, when we, when we have the best intentions, sometimes we can't do it. So what I need to know is, like I said, I want to be able to speak to each bidder. They come in, we could do it in a closed session, have them come in separately, however we wish to do it. And at the same time, I would like to see, even as we have the scoring criteria, I would like to see, if it's not already in here, because I haven't looked at everything yet, but see basically the breakdown of their scoring even while they're here. And they can try to explain anything that they see on there. They can, because it's happened before. They've seen some, they've seen some errors on there, some things that weren't correct. And I'm not saying anybody did a bad job, but I'm just saying, I just want to make sure this is all done good correctly and as transparent as possible. So that's, that's definitely one thing I'd like to see. Be in here with all the bidders, one at a time or however you wish to set it up, and they explain why prices are higher. They explain what they mean by intend. Like I said, as I read through here, you know, like I said, I saw intent. The first one said intend. The second one said intend. The third one said intends all qualified. And the fourth one said, we don't intend to hire everybody. I mean, I think that was the most honest answer, honestly. But as far as it goes, I'd want to see that and of course the breakdown of the, of the points as well individually for each bidder.
And that's something we can talk about next week when we do the discussion, see if it's council consensus. Mr. Oakley?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a very brief question. I mean, if we were doing it right now, do this thing right now. I know what to do right now and the citizens would like it. And I would talk through the bidders. They've already told us what we need to know right here. My question is this, Mr. Olson, when you talks about this shift, can you define what that means? Because I'm, the way I'm reading it, that you said a shift would, would shift from solid waste to another function. So you mean, and that's free, that's money that's freed up, right? You don't mean that or is that a responsibility?
Those are, those are costs that are currently being borne by the solid waste fund that cannot be eliminated. So they have to be paid somewhere by, by someone, some, some operation of the city.
Okay. That's what I, so it would be one point, whatever that number was.
One point, one point six.
And the grass cutting is a good example.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't see anything about here about brush pickup. Is that, in that, one of those transfer deals?
It's, it's part of the base bid.
So the city would then would still?
Yes.
Pick up brush every Friday that we're doing? And any other of the, you know, twice annual?
Those, those are included in the base bid.
That's a shifted cost.
Uh, no, sir. That, that's, that's included in the base bid of the companies who made their proposals. So that's a, that's a current service that we offer and we ask them to give us a price that included doing the very same thing. That's the base bid.
So we'd have no decrease in what we're offering our services right now?
Correct.
Mrs. Nash King?
Mr. Olson, can you bring to us the, like, I know you said add team more. What other items do we always mention that if you have the shift? What else are we paying now? That's important to know.
All right. Ms. Nash King, you done? That was it? Mr. Johnson?
This says two and, two and one. Is there a whole nother slide that we're, a presentation that we're missing?
Which one is that?
This is page one and two. Is there a whole nother?
That's it. That was just a separate.
Okay. Is, is there where, I asked for the individual scores for each.
We'll get them for you.
Mr. Rivera?
Uh, three things. You going to put this in the website?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to post this in the website?
Yeah, now that it's been...
That, that one can be posted.
Now that it's been presented to the council.
Yeah. Okay, good. Second, when we speak about this, I don't want to see a closed session on this. Whether we speak out, we need to speak out in the public. And third, if this is the real numbers, then I'm going to speak for themselves. That's all I got to say.
All right. Mr. Harris?
I'd say this. Actually, I can, I concur with Councilman Rivera. I mean, I would love to do it in open session, but as you said, we talked about the bids and how it's, everything's, I guess, closed right now until it's all over. That's the only reason I suggested the closed session with us so we can make a very informed decision. Now, if we can do it in open session, let's do it. But if we can't, then that's why I say, let's do it this way and let's hear from each individual bidder.
We're going to, we're going to have to do a legal review on that, make sure that we're on sound, solid ground.
And next week, the discussion is in an open session and it's, that's things we can discuss next week. So, Mr. Oakley?
I don't know why we would go back in the closed session or any other session because it's all public now. It's only, the only thing that we have that's not is this. But the, like Mr. Rivera says, the numbers speak for themselves.
I agree. Mrs. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Olson, my suggestion is, okay, all this is out in the open, right? Everyone in Colleen knows that we're going to do this. It's out in the open paper and everything else. Just thinking that we have some of the people here tonight and if any of them have any suggestions or anything that they would like to see. I think the citizens do need to get involved. We need to have an open meeting with the citizens. Let them, we don't need three minutes. We need more than that. And just like a town hall meeting and let them make, come out with their questions because this is really going to affect the citizens here in Colleen. Not only this, the city council is going to make the final decision, but the citizens do have a right to speak up on this solid waste. A lot of the employees are afraid they're going to lose their jobs. A lot of them want to come up and speak as well. So I suggest like a town hall meeting and because right now, it's going to be a lot of reading on all these, all these solid waste companies. So I suggest that we have a town hall meeting, let the people come and voice their opinion, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If, if everybody's done, we did have a citizen. So if we can move on. Where you finished, Mr. Olson, on your presentation? So at this time, we're just going to go ahead and move on to our CP eighteen dash zero zero one. And Seka Berry, come on up. And you got three minutes. And I don't have a clock, so we'll just estimate.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Seka Berry. I live here in Colleen. Council, I did go ahead and pass out or have passed out to you an infographic that I created in regards to what it looks like when we compare Colleen and our recycling to neighboring cities. And you'll notice that Colleen and Harker Heights are the only cities nearby that do not actually have curbside recycling. And that, I think, is a very, very big problem. When it comes to sustainability, we don't have time to consider that this may not be the best decision for city employees. We have to consider all of the people who live in the city. As a former educator in this city, if I failed to meet standard, then I would be held accountable for that. And so it's important that we recognize that unfortunately, to some extent, the solid waste in our city has failed. In 2016, when this council and several members on this council decided to disband the curbside recycling, you guys contributed to that failure. Mr. Kilpatrick said that at some point, we needed to have a conversation about bringing it back. Today is day zero. I'm a citizen here. My husband teaches here. I taught here. I own a home here. But in order for me to maintain being one of the eight hundred and thirty-two people in this city who have a thirty-two gallon trash can, I have to wash my trash, store my trash and bring it all the way down to the recycling center here in downtown. And I live in Yell Ranch. Why can't I bring it to the transfer station? Well, that's easy. The last time I brought an overflowing car full of papers from my husband's school in order to recycle, I couldn't fit it in the bins. And so I brought it to the transfer station bailing area where I was told by a city employee not to even bother because it was going in the trash anyway. Because in truth, the recycling personnel don't have enough people to get over to the transfer station, do what they need to do. So basically, what I'm telling you here today is that whether we recycle, whether we choose to have a curbside recycling program or not, what really needs to happen is we need to kind of look at ourselves and look at what we've set as the precedent for our city. As of right now, a department that doesn't work for the citizens in this city. And that's a big problem. So that was just a few of my comments from me sitting down and listening to what you all had to say. And also, of course, I should mention that when I talk to city officials...
About thirty seconds.
Who tell me that the problem in our city is a lack of education. I spoke to the KISD Board of Trustees yesterday and, or last week, I should say, sorry. And one thing I told them was that they need to also educate our students. Because students who educate in schools or who get educated in schools about recycling come home and expect their parents to do the same thing. So my closing comment is this, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing, even if it's the most uncomfortable thing to do. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. And we're going to go ahead and move on. DS eighteen dash zero three two, discuss agenda items for the regular city council meeting of April twenty-four, twenty eighteen. First thing on there is our minutes. MN eighteen dash zero zero eight, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of April tenth, twenty eighteen. Any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, moving on to resolutions. RS eighteen dash zero two seven, consider memorandum resolution approving a professional service agreement with Carver LLC in Bell County for the design evaluation, contract administration and construction phase service for the security surveillance project on Robert Gray Army Airfield. Welcome, Mr. Van Valkenburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney. Uh, Bell County received a Defense Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant in December two thousand and seventeen for this project. The city approved it in a local agreement with Bell County in April of two thousand and eighteen, in which the city would be responsible for the management of the project, including design, construction, and closeout services. This project is fully funded by Bell County and the aforementioned grant. The airport design engineer, Garver, completed a preliminary engineering review for the project, which identified system deficiencies and provided recommended solutions, including CCTV, monitoring recording equipment, data storage, and other items. The staff has negotiated an agreement with Garver team for the final design of the project. Cost for this is four hundred and twenty, forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. There is no financial obligation to the city for any of these funds. We considered alternatives to use this DAG and county funding to design and complete the project, or not to design the project with this team. We recommend alternative one. The project is fully funded through the grant and Bell County. There is no financial impact to the city or the Department of Aviation. This is a similar team that was composed for the A-RAC project, and the project is fully supported by Fort Hood. Thus, we recommend the city council why authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Garver for the project, as well as any and all change orders or supplement agreements with the amount set by state and local law, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Harris?
Let's see, in the, I guess, the contract here, it's in section five, five point one, instruments of service, where it says here that says Garver's electronic media are not furnished, are furnished without guarantee of compatibility with the owner's software or hardware, and Garver's sole responsibility for the electronic media is to furnish a replacement for defective disk within thirty days. So I mean, is their, is their software gonna be compatible with ours?
It always has been, and it still remains. So I think they're talking about if the disk fails, that's part of it, they'll do a replacement disk. But for all projects we've had with them, we've had fully compatible software and media.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was, that was my concern. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Moving on, RS eighteen dash zero two eight, consider memorandum resolution approving use of a request for proposal for the security surveillance project on Robert Gray Army Airfield. Continuation of that. Mr. Van Valkenburg?
Thank you, uh, very much, sir. For the previously mentioned project, staff is recommending the use of request for proposal, uh, which has been successful for several, uh, airport projects. And this project will provide, as we talked about, the operational security surveillance system for both airports. The RFP is the right tool. It's qualitative, evaluative. It provides a mechanism to compare various systems. It estimates the system's, uh, future capabilities, and it provides the best value for the army, the city, and the airport. We considered two things. One is to use this RFP to select a system, or to use a standard design bid build process. We do recommend alternative one, saves time and development costs. There's no, it permits the selection of the most suitable and cost-effective system for both the RGAAF and regional airport. There's no financial impacts against the project. All costs are borne after system selection, and it will provide the best value for both the army and the city. Thus, we do ask that the city council authorize staff to utilize the RFP for this system and this process. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions? All right, seeing none. RS eighteen dash zero two nine, consider memorandum resolution approving a lease agreement with CSI Aviation Inc. at the Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport. Mr. Van Valkenburg?
Thank you again, sir, as we continue with aviation night for council. This lease agreement is with CSI Aviation, uh, at the Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport. CSI Aviation is a, uh, flight operator that provides both scheduled and unscheduled charter services, medical transport of both personnel and organs, and they are, very importantly, they're TRICARE certified, one of the only firms I know aviation-wise that is TRICARE certified, uh, for these types of services. They also are certified for military charter and transport with the army. The initial agreement is for a one-year term beginning, uh, May first, two thousand and eighteen, while we are negotiating a multi-year facility and operational agreement, uh, with this company. We are asking for incentives, which is a waiver of the initial six months of rent for this, uh, contract. We considered not to enter into a lease with CSI. However, we also consider negotiating the lease to establish and diversify aviation business operations at the regional airport. Staff does recommend the second alternative. We've determined that the proposed terms and conditions for the lease are fair and competitive, and CSI will diversify our operations at the airport, bring high-paying jobs to the community, add potential economic stimulus to the clean area, add econo, uh, economy of the airport, and bring a new and needed aviation service to central Texas. Thus, we recommend the council approve the lease agreement with CSI, authorize the city manager to execute same and execute any and all addendums, including termination to the extent allowed by city charter and the laws of the state of Texas. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Johnson?
Well, it's a comment, great, great job. I think it's good for the airport and our economy. There's two questions. On page one, article three, para, para five, um, is there a deposit, security deposit? I didn't see one. I, I, I would really like a, uh, one month's rent, security deposit placed in there. I know it's, it's business, but it's still city property, and just in case they damage anything, including the two office spaces they're leasing. So if we can have a deposit equal to one month's rent, I think that'd be great. Um, and then second, on article four, paragraph one of the proposed lease, um, it talks about the written consent has to be obtained by the city manager. Is there any way to, uh, to change that to where Matt can have that authority instead of already, instead of going to just to the manager?
Authorities, authorize it to the department instead of the city manager?
To him, airport aviation.
Airport.
Sir, that's a question for the city manager and the council.
City manager, is that all right?
No.
No?
We can certainly delegate that, but council, council should be dealing with me and-
Yeah, usually the city manager's the one that signs everything there, so.
No, it's not the signing up. When, when you look at, um, article four. Counsel, that, never mind. I missed where I hit.
All right. Mr. Harris, did you have a question?
Uh, yes. In article six, rentals fees and accounting records, um, let's see, it says, beginning on, in the, the second point there, it says, beginning on November first, twenty-eighteen, tenants shall pay airport usage fees in the form of landing fees for aircraft operated by the tenant as described in exhibit C, and says documented, documented air medical mission landings are exempt from the payment of landing fees. Uh, is there, I guess I'll say, why is that?
We gave them a, a break on the medical portion of that. They don't plan on medical portions for the initial flights here. They're all charter, what they have booked right now. We felt that was an added incentive, uh, for them, for the, for the medical fees, uh, for that, for the landing fees. Now, the good news about that is, most aircraft are under twelve-five, twelve thousand five hundred pounds. We don't collect landing fees on aircraft under twelve thousand five hundred pounds, so.
Okay, all right. That explains that.
Yes, sir.
Um, let's see, next, um, let's see, after, after their initial lease term is up, then they get to go month to month?
That's correct.
Um, what, what kind of, I guess I'll have to ask the question, because I'm worried about stability. So what, what kind of plan do they have as, as, as far as the length of time they'll be using the airport? Because if they go month to month, then of course, you could just-
Yes, sir. The initial term and the month to month are to get us through while we're negotiating the multi-year lease and facility arrangements for them. Uh, at this point, we have engineering drawings from them for a temporary facility that we'll be putting up at the airport, and now we're looking at a long-term facility for them. That's what we're negotiating with them now. This is simply to get us through that, that phase while we do the design and, and through, and through the, uh, final negotiations.
Okay. And my, I guess my final question is, uh, you, you made mention about, of course, this caught my attention, but you made mention about, you know, higher paying jobs and so forth and things like that. Um, what, what, what type of jobs would they provide that actually, that I, that will actually pay the, the hi, the higher wages?
High-paying jobs?
Yes.
Yes, sir. There are flight nerves, flight nurses, physician, flight physician assistants, aircraft pilots, aircraft mechanics, and then the administration staff. So whenever you're paying pilots, mechanics, uh, a flight nurse, so a registered nurse, and any registered physician assistant or flight physician assistant, those are high-paying jobs.
So would those, would those people be, I guess, would they be hired from here, or just they can be hired from anywhere, basically, or?
I know that they're local in the area, so they'll be looking for people to hire here-
Okay.
-to fulfill those positions. Because this is a new base for them. Here go, they need to hire new people to, uh, be part of that base.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Oakley?
Yes, um, Mr. V, going back to your, um, the portion of the contract that talks about medical in, in amalgamation of, of healthcare in the area, what would they, who would they be supporting? Would they be supporting like Metroplex or?
All, all of the hospitals. We have those flights now a, at the airport that are provided by other providers outside of state. So they, uh, will provide both the Fort Hood, they've already met with the, uh, the hospital folks at Fort Hood, at Darnell. So Metroplex, Seton, Darnell, any Scott and White, uh, right now, they have done, uh, organ transplant for Scott and White. They've done those services already from, uh, from this area.
So they're-
So it's all their, it doesn't matter who it is, but their added benefit is by being TRICARE certified, now they provide services to a wider, uh, base of veterans and military folks that previously wouldn't have had some of that coverage.
And so it's not only just for patients, but we're talking about organs, uh, license, life, uh, saving-
Yes, sir. Whatever's, whatever's necessary, they are licensed, uh, for the full spectrum of transport, uh, for the medical services.
Pretty much for, you know, for Scott and White, Metroplex, Seton, every-
All of them, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The army. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Van Valkenburg.
Thank you, sir.
Next is RS eighteen dash zero three zero, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of a red-chinny fire truck. All right. Mr. Chief Brank?
Thank you. Mayor, council, the idea on your agenda is a new fire engine. Uh, the Colleen Fire Department in two thousand and eighteen, uh, during emergency assessment, needs assessment, determined that we needed, that the, the newest emergency service needs assessment has determined we need a fire engine. In the two thousand and eighteen budget, we originally delineated ambulances as the appropriate purchase. On January the third, we sent a memo out to the council, uh, trying to change the direction. After we evaluated what our needs were, we determined that a fire truck would be a greater need at this time. I did receive a few responses back that said, go ahead, go forward with the fire engine. So that, based on that, we, we moved forward on, on this process. The alternatives that we considered was to defer the purchase, which would result in a shortage of essential equipment. What that means is, is that if a fire, if we had more fire engines break down, uh, and we didn't have enough engines to put in fire stations, we could end up with a station without a fire engine in it. Uh, we could purchase the ambulances as originally identified in the two thousand and eighteen budget. We could purchase a fire engine with the original specifications, which would have been much more expensive. Uh, we could assess or rewrite our, our original specifications and focus on functionality, uh, and specifically with firefighter safety, resulting in the best value. That's what we chose to do. And to put this in context, the fire engine that we're talking about replacing has a hundred and forty-four thousand miles on it. It probably doesn't sound like a lot when you compare it to a car, but it also has two thousand five hundred and seventy pumping hours on it, which would be, if you did the equivalency, that, if you drove down the highway at sixty miles an hour, that's an extra two hundred and fifty-seven thousand miles, which would make the equivalent of wear and tear on the truck at about four hundred thousand miles, is what that would make the equivalent at. It does concern, conform to city policy. Uh, Colleen is a member of the Houston Galison Area Council Purchasing Cooperative, and it is in compliance with the Texas Local Government Code, section fifty-two zero two-two, satisfies the legal requirements for competitive bids. Each of the vendor supplying quotations participates in the HGAC cooperative. The action steps that we did to find a fire engine was to convene a panel comprised of firefighters of various ranks. We worked with Fleet Services, uh, the director of Fleet Services to determine the budget and finance, revised specifications focusing on functionality and safety, and solicited quotations based on the new specifications. The outcome, and if you look at these prices, uh, there's also a buyboard fee, which is two thousand dollars, which you may have noticed. So, uh, if there was a discrepancy, the two thousand dollars is a buyboard fee. Uh, the outcome is that Sid and Martin's pierced the base price, and these, these are base prices of the fire trucks, and any base price that you look at here, we'll need to add the loose equipment costs in order to make the truck functional. Loose equipment costs are nozzles, fire hose, and various loose equipment. So Sid and Martin's was five forty-two, four four four. Hall Ferrera, the base price was five seventy-nine, eight seventy-seven. Lone Star E-one, the base price was six ninety-seven, four eighty-five, and the added loose equipment is forty-four thousand, five fifty-six. I think you're taking care of me over there, aren't you? Because I forgot to click. Thank you. So the financial impact on Sid and Martin Emergency Group best value was five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and in collaboration with finance and Fleet Services, the financing is appropriated in the account number that you see on the screen. And staff recommends that the city manager be authorized to execute the purchase of a fire engine through HGAC cooperative contract from Sid and Martin's Emergency Group, and that the city manager or designated expressly author, expressly authorized to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, chief, uh, would they be putting this, I know with Fire Station Number Nine and the engine there, almost remind me of a nursery rhyme that they did with a train. But, uh, that, would they, would they, uh, would they ship this, uh, this engine to the buyboard, or would they come directly to us, or how does that work?
Okay, so what we do is purchase it through the buyboard. Once we do that, we're a placeholder in line in the factory, and the factory will, wherever we stand in line, will begin to build the fire truck. We will go to the factory to do an inspection on the truck prior to the completion of the truck, to make sure that all the specifications are correct. Once they are correct, we do a final inspection. That will come back to the dealer. Uh, I think the dealer is in Houston, I believe. They have another place in Dallas. I don't know which place it'll go to, either Dallas or Houston. We'll do the final inspection on the fire truck, and then we will have them deliver the fire truck to Colleen, probably from Houston or Dallas. The actual plant that's building the fire truck is in Wisconsin. It's, uh, Appleton, Wisconsin, is, is the town.
Is that the same, uh, place or plant? Because you showed pictures of the one, the engine in, uh, Fire Station Nine, where we're putting it together with, from the chassis and everything?
So that one was built in South Dakota.
Okay.
So this is a different company.
Okay.
Uh, we did some price comparisons to try to do a little bit better on our budgeting, so that we would come up with a, with a good, safe fire engine that would accomplish our mission for a much better price.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, chief, I think this is a fantastic idea that you are coming up with getting an engine. After the purchase of this engine, how long exactly will it take to get everything complete?
Usually, it's about a year.
A year?
We're hoping we can speed that process up. We could compress it down to nine months, but most of the time, it's about a year to build a fire engine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Uh, first thing I want to say, I'm glad we're getting another fire engine. Um, but, uh, I guess the question I have now is, um, because we originally had the ambulances planned, and y'all, like you said, you did an assessment and determined that we needed to get a fire engine, uh, instead, as far as a higher priority. So I guess the question now is, um, on a scale, I guess on a scale of one to five, as far as the two ambulances that we were gonna purchase, on a scale of one to five, uh, what is our level of need for those as well? Because I know they were, if they were put on there, that means there must have been some need, but this, this, of course, uh, overrode the need for those. But what, on a scale of one to five, what's our, what's our need for those two ambulances?
So we always need fire engines and ambulances, because if you look at our, at our, our fleet of ambulances, we need to rotate them about every three years. So if we have nine ambulances, right now, we're running eight, but let's just use nine. You'd have to buy about three, about three per year to keep up with that. So on a one to five scale, your ambulance need is a two or a three. On the one to five scale right now, your engine need is highest, the, the numbers four and five being the, a greater need.
Right, right.
It's a four or five for a fire engine. So we need ambulances as well. We, of course, we're trying to make the most out of the money that's available within the-
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, we'll, we'll work on that next year with Fleet Services.
And actually, that's, that's what I was gonna ask. I was gonna say, what is our feasibility of actually, um, getting those ambulances put onto the, uh, budget for next year?
It's actually very good, because, you know, we're, we're budgeting a fixed amount in our general fund now for, uh, fleet replacements. So I hesitate to say it's absolute, but it's pretty close.
Okay, good, good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Herrera?
I kinda dare to say, are your call for service on those ambulances almost doubled by now for a year?
Call for service goes up every year.
But I got a feeling that call for service now has been the highest maybe you've seen in the history of Colleen.
I think our calls now are approaching twenty-five, twenty-six thousand a year. Now, that's everything. That, that's all types of calls that we have. So minor calls, major calls, but they are occupying.
My other question is, uh, in those call for service that we get in the city, are there, were there any time that we had to go to privatize, uh, private company to be able to do those call for service, because we couldn't do it? for service, because we couldn't do it?
There are a lot of times when we use mutual aid or automatic aid, they come across, Harker Heights comes and helps, Fort Hood has come and helped.
Is that getting to be, is that getting to be a, something that we're doing kind of often lately?
Well, what we do is we have what's called zero level on ambulances, so when the ambulances get down to one that's available in service, we basically make a call out, the battalion chief makes a call out, and he has them expedite, so that we can get another unit back in service. So we don't do, we don't ask for mutual aid very often, but yes, it could happen at any point during the day. Our levels of ambulances that get down to one or zero is several times a week. We do the best that we can to try to rotate.
Well, I understand you all, try to do the best.
As quickly as we possibly can, but at any time, depending on what the individual calls could be, anytime during the day, we could possibly have a mutual aid situation.
Lately, I'm being very, very concerned about the call for service in those ambulances out there, and giving privatized company to come in and give us a hand. And I know that costs a lot of money to the city as well. I got a feeling we do need those ambulances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Johnson.
There was a fire engine that burnt up a while ago, and I think the city got a payout insurance from TML around 400,000. Is that allocated, or is it just sitting in general?
No, that money was allocated in the general fund as part of the overall general fund appropriation. The amount that we got back actually covers this fire engine.
Perfect.
So if you're doing an assessment on the amount we got paid from insurance versus what this fire engine costs, the insurance covers this fire engine.
Okay, and so it was put back in the fire department, not just general fund? Okay.
Who was it?
It was put into the general fund. It was put into the general fund and used when, when the city was feeling a lot of that financial stress that y'all dealt with a couple of years ago. And so this, this fire engine is being paid for out of the equipment replacement allocation we make every year. I don't know how you want to look at that, but that's, that's basically how it worked.
Mr. Harris.
So the, so the money put back, when the money was put back in the general fund, it wasn't used to build Fire Station Number Nine?
No, it wasn't used for that purpose.
Thank you.
That's bomb money, that was bomb money.
Previously allocated. Sorry.
No, I was going to say, that's our last of that bomb money we had when we built that fire station, it wasn't this, so.
Because I heard that somewhere, but I was curious.
No, that's not true, that money was previously allocated for the fire, I mean, for the fire station.
Alright, anybody else? No? Moving on to public hearing, thank you, Chief. PH 18-006, hold the public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by WLW Enterprises, LLC Case Number Z 18-03, to rezone Lot 13 Block 2, Levy Commercial First Amendment from B5 Business District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District, to R2 Two-Family Residential Districts and Lots Number 14 through 19, Block 2 Levy Commercial First Amendment from B5 to Business District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. Man, there's a lot in there, Mr. McElwain. The properties are addressed as 302, 304, 306, 308, 310, 312, and 400 Lowe's Boulevard. Mr. McElwain, that was a mouthful.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Council. As the mayor mentioned, the properties in question are an existing subdivision that was platted in conjunction with the extension of Lowe's Boulevard. These lots are located along the south right away of Lowe's Boulevard. And it happens that these properties have a current zoning of B5 and R3, but they abut against an existing single-family neighborhood. So on this map graphic, you'll see a light blue ring, that's our 200-foot notification boundary. Within that ring is a bold shape for these lots here. These are the lots in question, this is the area in question. This is a holdover of the old R3 zoning district that is on part of this lot, and everything as you head east is Zone B5, but you'll see along Brook Hollow and Brookway, these all existing single-family homes. Now, this area is designated for a general commercial use, but in our conversations with the developer, it's such a small area, and we actually happen to have residential within this general commercial area, we were not in a position to feel comfortable moving forward with the Flume Amendment, we just didn't think it was necessary, it's a very small area. We notified 33 surrounding propping owners. We received the response of support from Mr. Bruce White, as he is the applicant, but he also owns adjacent property, a portion of it within the 200-foot notification boundary. At our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that we had, Mr. Eads, Ms. Jackson, and Mr. Bennett were present, and they voiced concerns about flooding in the area, this is an existing condition, particularly downstream. And also, there was a conversation ensued about whether or not these structures would be two-story. That's a building code zoning requirement, if someone wants to build a two-story home, they could, but they were concerned about privacy. After due consideration of those comments, and also the recommendation of the city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of R2 zoning for these properties, and I'll go back to the map graphic. It's only for these properties right here. This is R3, and you can put single-family, two-family, or above in that zoning district. As you can see, Council, they're pretty much shaped the same as the single-family lots. The developer's intent is to market it. If they get a builder for single-family homes, they'll build single-family homes. If they get a builder for duplexes, they'll build duplexes, they may mix it, we're not sure, but they absolutely didn't want commercial right against these houses here, and we agree that wasn't a good, a good thing to have in that community. So I'd like to answer any questions you have regarding this, and I'm available for any thing you may want to have answered.
Questions, Ms. Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McElwain, I have talked to one of the, one out of the three people.
Yes.
That voiced their concern about the flooding, and has there been a survey to see if there's, there won't be flooding in that area?
We receive as part of any type of development proposal, elevation certificates of something that is a floodplain, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So we do have maps that show floodplain areas here. I don't have a map graphic of it, but what you'll typically see, Ms. Fleming, is we have a situation where Brookway Drive actually acts as a convenience point for a lot of flooding in this area.
Okay.
So any development that occurs here will have to account for that at the time they come in to pull a permit. So if, they're not in the floodplain, by the way, but if you are developing.
Okay, you mean Ms., I talked to Ms. Jackson, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One of the things that we require is that you can't criticize in downstream community if you build, so there's a bit of analysis that we go through. So Ms. Jackson did voice concerns. The situation is that neighborhood has been flooding for a while. Their concern is that they think further development will exacerbate and make that situation worse. We feel comfortable that we can account for any floodplain issues from this development quite easily. We actually accounted for a lot of that when we did the capital improvement project for the extension of Lowe's Boulevard. It was part of the Tremere Road CIP program. So the city accounted for the development potential based on the existing commercial development here. So if they downzone it, what we're looking at is less impervious cover, and should be easier to accommodate those structures versus all impervious, bigger areas where you would have commercial developments, less opportunity for floodwaters to seep into the ground.
So all that you're saying, everything is okay?
For this project, yes, but we do admit that if you're familiar with this area, we have a 100-year limit, it floods.
Okay, well, she's real excited about it, and she's not far there, so I don't know what's going to happen, but thank you, Tony.
And she's more than welcome to come to see us, I didn't get a chance to talk to her, but our door's open if she has.
Okay, because I talked to her in depth today, so she's really concerned about this. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Harris.
Question just came to my ears, Councilwoman Fleming was speaking. The area that they want to build in, is that all grassy area right now, just pretty much so?
It is, yes.
Okay, so, so I can understand a citizen's concern when they say they're going to build over there, because of course, that's going to add more concrete, and that's going to leave less, less land for the water to be absorbed into and so forth. So you said that, I guess, I guess, you know, the city has, there's a plan as far as diverting that water, because like I said, when the concrete comes, that's going to be more water going somewhere else. So what is, what is our plan as far as being able to divert that water, to keep that area from flooding even more, since it's going to be pretty much adjacent to it? At the same time, you know, I guess I have to ask the question, whose responsibility is it going to be to take care of providing that drainage, if you will, to an area that will be sufficient to minimize the, the extra water that may come into that neighborhood?
Anytime we have a development in the city, it is the responsibility of the developer slash builder to handle the runoff from their site. Now, we review it, and we make sure it's in accordance with the Drainage Design Manual. In this particular case, what Mr. White is has decided to do is to basically do a waiver of runoff liability, and what that means is he's going to discharge the water from one lot to another lot, onto his own property. So what that means is that if you are the future builder of this property, eventually you're going to get to a location where you're going to have a lot that you're going to have to really accommodate the runoff from. Now, that document is something that gets recorded, we keep it on file, we present it to anyone who comes in for a permit. So essentially, what you typically have, they'll grade the pad side up, and they'll divert the runoff into a certain direction. We don't allow you to divert one or two lots onto one other lot. And then you'll see a series of drainage systems that will convey some of the runoff to the street eventually, some that will convey to some other means if there's a common drainage feature that may be in a subdivision. For this small of an area, we're not anticipating any problems at all. Actually, I would probably tell you that the Lowe's Boulevard project itself was probably the lion's worth of the work with regard to the drainage.
Okay, let's see, so is, from y'all's evaluation, the size, the size of the lot that he's going to leave to take the water in, is that going to be adequate enough? Do you think?
We think so, we actually feel comfortable.
So there's not going to be any significant runoff into any streets, or, I mean, once it's in a lot, I mean, so if there's a heavy rain, it's not going to be any excessive runoff to the streets or anything like that, to add, add water onto the streets or anything, or, I mean, in a normal rain, I'll say that.
Well, I was going to just say that, if you have a typical rain situation, we're fine, but this area sees just a lot of water. I mean, historically, I talked to a resident, and he's been a longtime resident there, even when they were building, he made mention that was a spring in this area, and so it is an area that is, even in the driest of times, still prone to moisture. What you do have to account for is that standards were different at the time that the subdivision back here was built.
Right.
And you've got this existing condition with just a, a pretty good discharge of water. I'm familiar with that area, and it's, it's something we keep an eye on, but it's something that if the city's involved, it becomes another drainage project that Mr. Olson's team will do, and we'll also monitor this the same way with Mr. Olson's group.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to reassure the council also that, you know, being in my district, we have a lot of, a lot of concerns in this, in this area for, we have multiple underground springs. Thirty-three years ago, when I put in a swimming pool, we dug this hole, and the pool itself flew out of the ground because water, underground spouts started coming up. So we have, we do have, but I will assure that what they've done with Lowe's Boulevard, we'll alleviate that, and to assure the council, as a B5, what it is right now, the developer could put a 20-store strip mall in there with all parking lot and all cement, and no grass permeation to go into it, without ever coming to this board, or this council, or anything but plating. So I've spoken to about eight of the residents around there, and they're, while, while they'll always express concern about any type of flooding, it's going to be developed, whether it's developed commercial with a lot of cement, or with residential with lesser amount, where we can do ground permeation, and you can also runoff into retention. As I said, and the waiver will more than account for dumping it onto the developer's last property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Nash King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a concern. I agree with Mr. Harrison, Mrs. Fleming, about Ms. Jackson. We know that there's a problem, and I know it's been a while, the building codes have changed. Why are we not addressing that issue if we already know a wait-and-tell get worse than what it is?
You have a couple of different, and I'll, I'll, I'll answer your question, so that we're not getting outside of the vein of the zoning case, but as it relates to land use, the fear is that any more development will basically make a situation worse. Each, each dynamic in somebody's yard is a little different, some people may have standing water for a while, depending on the topography of the ground, and some people may be at the low end of a subdivision. Some people have added more impervious surface to their yard. A lot of what we see with regard to drainage is complaint-driven, but it's dynamic in the sense that when it rains, you get calls, when it's dry, you typically get fewer. With Ms. Jackson, I'm not familiar if she's made her concerns known to anyone on the staff prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but if, if it is something that warrants a visit from the city staff, Ms. Ramirez's group is available to do that, because it may be a situation that is unique to her property that warrants some further consideration. But for this particular zoning case, in terms of just land use, as Mr. Kilpatrick mentioned, you've got the ability to put in commercial now, and that typically will have far less green space, and while we can still account for the drainage, from a land use compatibility standpoint, it's probably not desirable, and when you add that to their concerns about flooding, you may have a dynamic there where it just becomes untenable for them to live there. So we're trying to mitigate the land use by downzoning with your consideration, and then if you have a citizen, and you think that they have concerns, direct them our way, we will certainly meet with them, we'll go out on their property, and we'll do what we can to help them.
Alright, anybody else? Ms. Fleming.
Oh, Ms. Jackson, let's see if she would like to meet with you with her concerns and everything, thank you, sir.
Okay.
All the tonight.
Alright, well, thank you, Mr. McElwain. Moving now on to DS 18-033, discuss citizens' donation to the Senior Citizens Utility Build Assistant Program, Animal Services, and the Youth Summer Program, Mr. Baldwin.
32, Mr. Mayor. Oh, 32.
Did I miss something?
Did we discuss oh, 32?
32. I don't have a 32.
Yes, that was the discussion of the agenda, right?
Oh, yeah, that's the agenda, no, we're good.
We're on 32 now. I know some people are using, some of the council members are using electronic version, does anyone need a copy version of the proposed policy?
I don't, I don't have anything at all.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Anybody else?
Senator, it's actually oh, 33.
Oh, 33?
This one's.
On the agenda online.
Presentation, okay.
Oh, online?
Yeah. Presentation on the agenda online, it's oh, 33.
It's got a link under there, yeah.
Misnumbered, apologize for that.
Mayor, City Council, tonight is a proposal for a policy for utility bill monetary donations, and we'll cover three different programs, we'll get into those a little bit more after we discuss the basis of the policy. The policy will establish, if approved by you, the process that will be followed for donations received through the utility bills. It identifies programs to be included in the utility bills, it states the purpose of the program, it explains the application process. explains the application process and eligibility determination, and states the public purpose served by the program. Donations received will be deposited in the accounts designated for the donated purpose. The first program is one you may be familiar with. It's the Senior Citizen Utility Bill Assistance Program. The purpose of this program is to provide financial assistance for senior citizens on their utility bills. The application is submitted to the Director of Finance. Eligible senior citizens must be at least sixty years of age. They may apply, and if they're accepted on the program, they can remain on for six months. Afterwards, they have to wait six months before they can reapply. The public purpose served is to reduce the impact on community resources by providing assistance to senior citizens who are unable to pay their utility bill. This next one's a newer one. It's a summer youth program. The purpose of this program is to provide financial assistance for children unable to attend city-based, city-fee-based summer programs. An application submitted, is submitted to the Director of Community Services from February first through April fifteenth for the following summer. To be eligible, families must be at or below eighty percent of the area's median household income. For example, an annual household income of a four-person household must be at or below forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty. Eligible children must live in the city of Killeen and be between the ages of four and sixteen. Each child may receive a discount up to one hundred dollars towards the cost of the program or programs with a two-hundred maximum discount per family per summer. So, there's really no money exchanged in hands. It's just the discount is applied. The public purpose served is to reduce the impact on community resources by providing services to children who are unable to attend city-fee-based summer programs. The next program is Animal Services Unit. The purpose of the program is to provide additional resources for animals in the care of the Animal Services Unit. The Chief of Police will manage the donations received. Funds will be used to provide spay and neuter services for animals in the care of the Animal Services Unit. The public purpose served is to reduce the impact on community resources by providing spay and neuter services for animals in the care of Animal Services Unit.
I have one question. Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Fleming.
One question, Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, ma'am.
Where it says about the animal shelter can only be used for spayed and neutered services, wouldn't that be tying the hands of the new director? Because if he's not able to go further than just spayed and neutered, it may be something else that the animals may need in that shelter. So, if you're only gonna specify one thing, to me, the funds are gonna, you're gonna tie up the funds under one thing. So, I think that needs to be revised right there, sir.
And what we'll do is we'll take these suggestions and flush them out and try to come back with some different options next week. I would say that spay and neutering's one of the most expensive side of the house when it comes to animal services.
Yes, sir.
Moreover, there's other programs out there, funds, both budgeted and otherwise, that cover some of those other expenses. That said, we'll definitely include it in here as a recommendation.
You can kinda look through that and make sure you could kinda add something else to that, because it's like just one thing. I know spayed and neuter is very important because I think that's a very important thing. When you adopt an animal, they should be spayed and neutered before they leave the shelter. That's one thing I was talking about to Mr., the other director when he was there. But I think we need to broaden this out, sir. If you could possibly do that.
Maybe create a clause that allows some discretion. In that way, we, because where would the list end if we don't? So, we'll find some type of generic clause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Nash King.
Yes, I'm finished now.
I have a question about the, and I commend you on the policy for you, but we do the ways to pay for all family members to attend events in the city. But the eighty percent, where did you get the eighty percent from? And does this apply for each individual child in the house?
It's based on the family household income, I believe. It's based off the communities and schools. Is that what the form was used? I'm gonna ask Brett to highlight that. He's the one that tracked down that number for us.
Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Sir, it's the same guidelines that are used for CDBG. It's the average, eighty percent of the average median income of our area.
And will each youth be able to apply for this grant or this service, the whole household, five, five kids, each individual will be able to apply for it?
Well, it's based on the, it's, it's a sliding scale based on a number of family members, but it's not, there could be three kids and one adult. And so, it won't be limited, limited to two kids, but it will be two hundred dollars per household. That'll be the maximum. So, now, if there are, if there are three kids, and there's two programs in there, fifty dollars per program, we're going to spike out at a hundred dollars per kid or two hundred dollars for the household. If that's, one kid got a hundred dollars and the other got, the other two got fifty dollars, that would be the maximum, would be the two hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Brett. This is an example of the utility bill. If you look to the right portion of this screenshot, you'll see where it's been added to where someone who wants to donate funds for any one of these three programs, they have the opportunity to do so. If they wanna specify a program, they have that opportunity as well. We do have a program where if, for some reason, a customer would like to have, let's say, twenty dollars added on to their bill on a monthly basis, there's paperwork that the utility collection department would need to have filled out, and they can automatically bill that extra twenty month, twenty dollars on their monthly bill so they can continuously give for a particular cause.
Do we need to go down there and pick the paperwork up on this? Or how do we do that?
I, I think it depends on the customer, because some customers may not have access to internet. Some probably do. So, I would suggest anybody that, that does not have that email, internet capability, to notify utility collections either by mail. They can notify the city manager's office, what have you, and we'll facilitate that outcome. Next step is request City Council to consider placing the policy for management on monetary donations through the utility bills on a future agenda for consideration.
Can you, how much on the average do we receive from that? And is there any particular one that gets more that the citizens put on there?
Well, the summer program doesn't exist yet. This is just now starting. The animal services, I don't have that information, but that's separate.
I thought, I thought on the bills, there was a check mark. Was, there's not right now?
On the, on, for, they can do it for the senior utility bills. That one there, is it twenty thousand? Is that the number, generally speaking? Leslie, do you know? I don't have the exact number, sir. I've heard that number floated around, but we'll find out and get that back to the City Council.
Mr. Johnson.
Is, is there a way to have just a small printout that we can place at several of the high-traffic city-owned facilities, like the senior centers and the community centers?
Printout of the-
Just a-
The, the sample bill?
Yeah, just, I mean, just something that's real small that, that can-
Little flyers, what you're looking for?
Yeah, just something that we-
We can get something made up.
Videos. All right. Anybody else?
We would need to wait until it's adopted, of course, before we can do something like that.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. You're not done. I thought you were done.
I'm done, sir.
You're done?
Thank you very much. I am.
All right. And before we adjourn, I just have one question. We were talking, getting back to that item on solid waste. We were talking about doing a meeting next week. So, are we gonna do a special council meeting next week? Is that where we're heading? So, everybody, just kinda give everybody an idea. And we wanna do that after our regular council meeting. So, kinda plan ahead. So, next week is a special council meeting just for that one item there. So, with that, that was our last item. So- Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. I heard a second. All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.